Have your attention, we're gonna call the meeting to order.
All right, what about seven oh four? All right, this is um the December third meeting of Bethany Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, in attendance tonight, let's see, we have Hiram Peck, Town Planner, we have Veronica Novak. You're building, you're building and land use who is covering for our CEO, we don't have a CEO right now. Donna Cahill here recording. We have Brian Fournier, alternate, Fournier or Fournier?
Yes, fine.
Okay, all right, Brian, alternate. Uh, we have Donna Shay, member. We have John Corbo, member, Nancy Held Chee Hee, member and Chair, Alex Hutchinson, member and Vice Chair. Um, we have Adam Carbone, alternate, Brad Bookta, alternate, and Karen Miller, uh, member. Okay, so we do have quorum this evening. First off is review and approval of prior meeting minutes. The first one is October first, which I don't think we approved in November.
But the October meeting.
Which didn't happen.
Yep, I mean.
So I think it's. Yeah. So I think we just have a motion to accept what was written up for October that it didn't happen, Hiram.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept, uh, essentially document that the October meeting did not happen?
So moved.
In the second, I'll take Karen at that. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm abstaining, um, I was not there. Okay. Next to the November fifth meeting minutes. We're doing sessions.
Second.
Well, I was gonna say, I'll give you a second. Do we have a motion to accept? Or any comments? Do we have a second? Alex will second, okay, all in favor, say aye. All right, any opposed? Any extensions? Okay. So last. Okay, next stuff, publications for commission action, no publications submitted for commission action at this time. Uh, correspondence and commission action, uh, we have receipt of a number of letters. Bethany Economic Development Chair. Letter from Barry Zarberger on thirty eight Tuttle Road, letters and photos, Michelle Gwerden, fifteen Clay regarding fifteen Clay Road. Letter from Patricia Lamoro regarding sixty five Emerald Blaine, letter from Linda Caruso regarding sixty five Emerald Blaine. Letter from Mary Lachman, Scara Musino regarding sixty five Emerald Blaine, letter from Dominic, Scara Musino regarding sixty five Emerald Blaine. Email from Dennis Ballister regarding fifty one Emerald Blaine, email from Lori Marinco regarding forty three and fifty one Russell Road, and email from Arnie Sabatelli regarding thirty four Anne Drive. Um, I don't think those have any action at this time.
I would just need to mention, John, that the items that have letters with regard to items that are on the agenda with those that are filed.
Yeah. Okay, and the one that was received recently regarding sixty five, we can bring up when we have the public hearing for sixty five. Okay. So. These are the letters. That, or you have sixty five, okay, I don't think there's any action. Review and approval of bills with commission action. Okay, first up for this evening, um, this is submitted from Donna Cahill for a recording this evening, one hundred fifty dollars. Um, do we have a motion to accept? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Uh, second invoice for this evening is Hyrum's. And I believe this is only for, um, it's only for November, we caught up, right? Because I think we were behind before, okay, so this is just for November for two thousand dollars.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the November invoice, Brian.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Uh, okay, we did that, okay, public hearings is usually the case, we're running about five minutes early, so maybe we find something that will take five minutes worth of our time.
Can I ask a question?
Um, not for the public hearing.
It isn't for the public hearing at all, it's just without having the zoning enforcement officer, we just don't know what the process is for, I know some of these under the, um, correspondence are due to the public hearing, but there's a handful that aren't, we just don't know what the process is. Which, you know, will you, well, people look at paperwork, I mean, I know he received it, so it's clear. I just wanted to know.
Yeah, you have a letter and send it into the.
It's, yeah, one of my.
And then what we'll do is circulated to myself and to the commission, that would be appropriate, and then somebody will get back to you.
So if we're on this list, we know you received it, so you'll get back to us when you have time, understanding you're missing a position.
Great, I can tap on it, and I have relatively many residents in Bethany. Um, what if it is an emergent issue that somebody, the enforcement officer will normally be dealing with, but somebody needs to do it before January's meeting?
The same thing, they've done to us, if we already have a letter.
We already have it.
Take care of this, and we've had.
All right, good. Thank you.
Okay, well, do we have, is anybody, Hiram, is there anything in your opinion might be a?
That's the CEO.
Do we want to go through any of the CEO report?
Um, I don't, I don't think there's gonna be any updates on that at this moment, um, so I just talked to the authority about it, is this, is there for your information? But there's no update on that.
So does that mean that we don't even, would we run through it later, or no need to run?
You can later, if there's any questions on it. It was, no, no.
Okay.
I can tell you that, um, the one that says actually retired under CGS eight dash three J, um, I can take that three J, but that's my, my air. Um, that item with regard to regulation compliance, we've been taking care of, I let the district department office know that we're compliant, so.
Okay, so that really, I guess it just leaves us with a couple of minutes. I don't think we want to touch new business.
I can fill it with a quick update on the housing advisory. Primarily because, so the Housing Advisory Committee has been meeting every month, we had a meeting this Monday. Um, we definitely would like to set up a time with planning zoning, now that we have the new members will be seated. Um, for whenever is convenient, right after the first of the year. Um, give you an update on what the Housing Advisory Committee has been discussing, and a lot of it is sort of background work foundational. Um, but the idea is that we want to make sure as we move forward. And, and for the benefit of everybody in the public there, the Housing Advisory Committee is about a year old, was created to provide, uh, recommendations and information to planning zoning as it relates to housing issues in the town of Bethany. Um, so we would like to have a conversation to make sure we're looking at the issues that are most important and germane to planning zoning as you move forward, so that we're not going one way, you're going another. So that's a quick update.
Okay.
I can give you more if you have any questions, but.
No, thank you. Hiram, none of the new businesses are expedient after. Otherwise, we're really just looking to consume one or two minutes.
Yeah, that is great.
Yeah, all right, we'll wait till seven fifteen. Right, that looks like seven fifteen to me, it's about seven, what do you have?
Seven, so seven fourteen, all right.
Somebody chime when we hit seven fifteen. Thirty seconds, sorry. Okay, all right, great. Right, it's seven fifteen, so we'll call the public hearing to order. Um, once again, in attendance this evening, um, we have, uh, Hiram Peck, Town Planner, also mentioned that we have Finn Marino, Town Attorney. We have Veronica Novak, um. Building and land use. Building and land use who is kindly assisting us in lieu of a, a CEO. Um, we have Donna Cahill here for recording. We have Brian Fournier, uh, alternate member. We have Donna Shay, member, we have John Corbo, member, Nancy Held Chee Hee, member and Chair, Alex Hutchinson, member and Vice Chair, Adam Carbone, um, alternate member, Brad Bookta, alternate member, and Karen Miller, member. So, the first application in front of us is application twenty five zero one one. TSC Properties LLC, two eleven Cheshire Road, BNI Zone, the proposal is the application. Uh, or permit, uh, for construction of two ten thousand square foot commercial buildings and associated improvements for a construction company. Um, is there someone here to speak to?
Do you want them to write their name?
Well, the, well, once we have public comment, I think we'll just start with John Paul.
For the record, my name is John Paul Versia, I'm a licensed professional engineer in Lancerveire, licensed to practice State of Connecticut, Principal Officer, one ninety Fairwood Road in the town of Bethany. I'm here representing TSC Properties in the matter of development of approximately eight and a half acres on the north side of Route forty two, about a thousand feet from the intersection with Route sixty nine. Um, this is actually the edge, the westernmost edge of this property is actually the edge of the BNI Zone, the property is in the BNI Zone. Um, and what the, the towns are, their contractors are located in Scott Road in Prospect, this is a satellite, um, a satellite building so that they can store equipment and, uh, position stuff. What they do is contract and emergency utility work and snow plowing for the State of Connecticut and various towns. This would allow them to service the southern part of the state, they actually plow Bethany under contract with the State of Connecticut. And so what their proposal to do is bring in a road, um, of about four hundred feet into two buildings. They will have, um, a lay down yard on the west side, parking for the employees. It's already been through the Health Department, it's already been through the Inland Weapons Commission, those approvals should be in your package. If they're not, we can get in there, but we've already been approved. The, um, end construction, if anybody knows this area, the dog kennel is to the east, about four hundred feet. This site is screened by the novel ledge that's in between the dog kennel and this parcel. To the front, there's a substantial wetland corridor that can't be touched, and to the west is a residential house or proposed house law. So the site is very well screened, um, it's not anticipated to be, uh, lit. Um, there will be some building modern lights that go on when people get there, but we're not proposing any, uh, lights at the street or anything like that, it's a relatively simple operation, it's a relatively simple uh, application, it meets all requirements of the BNI Zone. And that's basically it, there's not much to it. Our operations are usually seven to five Monday to Friday, however, because it is a twenty four hour um, emergency services provider, like snow plowing or stuff like that, there will be times when they're in there at midnight or one o'clock in the morning.
And I should make mention too that we, uh, just note that, uh, required publication was made for the, uh, the public hearing. And I, I do see it looks like this is the inland wetlands approval here.
And we also did a certified mailing to all the engineers. That's your regulations are a little bit, um, unclear about that, so we did it just to be on the safe side.
I don't think we have any correspondence received on two eleven Cheshire Road, I don't think we have anything.
There are people on the long, if you want.
Uh, well, we'll open it to public comment in a minute, um, do we have? Any questions first, or?
John Paul, that's forty two, um.
This is forty two here, this is sixty nine here.
How far is that from sixty nine?
A thousand feet to this side. The BNI Zone in Bethany is a thousand feet off center line of Route sixty nine.
And how far is the closest lot with the house?
This one here is about three hundred and fifty feet, it's actually his son. Just as a little background, this is originally a thirty acre parcel. This is originally approximately a thirty acre parcel. The original, um, BNI Zone after it came up, went left in this way. We were actually rezoned it so that this, about the BNI line is now on the edge of what's gonna be the property line. The McCallum Construction Company is gonna be here, which is in the BNI Zone, and their son is gonna build a house here in the residential zone. The northern, uh, neighbor is, um, uh, the Mulch, uh, what we used to call Freezer Hill, but, uh, is now a mulch place. And the closest residence to this is over here someplace. This is a stone, and just key yourself in, this is a stone foundation, as you come down, there's a little stone foundation on the right, there's a house here with a stone garage right here. So that'll give you a, a frame of reference.
Is there any structures on the property now?
No.
There's a, a road and system road that you said there?
Yeah, there's an existing woods road. This was logged off, this is many, many, many years ago, probably about forty years ago.
How far from, is that, that's the kennel, the next thing that's east?
Yeah, the kennels were about three hundred feet over here.
Okay.
That's fine. And that's the nice parcel over, right? Should it eat, should it eat, right?
Yes.
Okay. And there's a cul-de-sac across the street, invite a buddy.
Excuse me, if you, if you speak, I just need to identify yourself.
Well, we think it's.
Yeah, uh, we'll open this to public comment in one minute, so let's just finish with, um, John Paul's presentation.
No, this. Basically, like I said, they don't get much easier than this, it's an eight and a half acre parcel in the BNI Zone, this is allowed use in the BNI Zone. And what they're proposing as well within the, uh, regulations.
The cul-de-sac would be no real dust?
Yeah, that's nowhere near it, yes. That's, what are you talking about, is there's these two loads here, Sabrina's over here.
Ah, okay.
But that's off of, uh, sixteen.
In terms of lighting, you said?
Just some building modern lights that go on and off, you know, the, uh, motion lights.
Yeah, not gonna have light along.
No, we're not putting lights along the drive, we're not putting, you know, a stanchion mount lights or anything like that.
Is signage, any signage?
Let's, no, the only thing was a small two by three sign at the, at the bottom of the driveway, he's not advertising it. You know, mailbox and a sign.
John, do you have any specs on the lights, or is it just like a standard house?
It's a standard, just a standard motion light, it's just, you know, we're not writing this. I don't know, but wait a second. Let me just make one stretch.
Did we have a question whether this should be under the moratorium, and that is one of the questions we had last time?
This doesn't, this isn't applied to the moratorium. Moratorium, it's my understanding that the questions you had last time were that this isn't allowed use, this is not a storage building, it's a, it's a specified use for storage buildings, we're just at people that.
Right, this is.
Set them up, this is not that.
A permanent use.
This is, that's correct, this is their construction company, that's correct.
So will not, there will not be any rental of space?
This is not rental, no.
Other businesses be able to put equipment there?
He need, he needs this to store his pipes, fittings, his equipment, so that, you know, when he gets called out, it's dry, it's warm and ready to go.
Any, um, idea of what kind of trucks or, um, noise?
Two to three dump trucks, um, four to five employees. It's, again, it's in a lot of use in the constructions, it's, it's, it's in a lot of use in a, uh, in a, this is not a trucking term. But it's gonna be two or three trucks, you know, maybe, what's that?
Occasionally, not, not.
And then four or five employees.
In terms of the snow plowing, what, what size trucks?
Dump trucks, like we have, yeah, yeah, standard, right?
Yeah.
For the record, this is Mr. McCallum, he's the owner.
No, I was trying to get a sense of whether it's like pickup trucks or bigger dump trucks?
No, you're gonna have pickup trucks, the guys are gonna drive pickup trucks, you know, you're gonna have smaller pickup trucks, but you're also gonna have dump trucks, because that's what you pour snow with, you haul sand with, and you spread sand. So it's the same thing with the town of Bethany uses.
So the, these are the trucks that are here plowing through the state. They're the trucks we would see up and down on sixty three, sixty nine, forty two.
That's what we pull.
Was that?
That's what the roads we pull.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, you have to understand, the state only has a couple of hundred trucks throughout these, so they reply, they, uh, rely on the majority of their trucks are now, um, contract plows. And like you said, he actually does sixty nine, forty two, and sixty three, so it's convenient.
And Hiram, I just think it's worth reiterating because it's been brought up that in terms of the moratorium um, on storage facilities, the, the metal building storage facilities, I think you had phrased it pretty well, that this is a direct business storage use as opposed to a rental.
Right.
Just a couple of things I wanted to clarify, I think, and you have a narrative that went with the, so the.
Yeah, there was a page and a half, okay, so that, that's covered clearly in the narrative, if it's not, I would suggest that you put a lot of that in some things. We can make it a condition of approval, that this is not a, a rental unit.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but I'm just saying, it should be uncovered in there, that you suggested.
They're not submitting a revised narrative.
The other thing that I think is fairly important here too is that BNI Zone talks a lot about outside storage, and it, it talks about the fact that that outside storage area, there are certain limitations on it, obviously with the size, but it also should be shown clearly on the.
It's called for right here.
Clear about.
Yeah, and what we're talking outside storage is some pipe, some, uh, some sand, what else?
That's basic.
Yeah, if this is not gonna be storing, uh, you know, twenty bins for various, you know, aggregates or, yeah.
So you can, what's the setback in the zone for this particular use?
Uh, and this, uh, side yard setbacks are around twenty feet. And we're averaging, and we're averaging, uh, fifty steps.
Yeah, there's essentially, right, you talked about side side with seventy feet, and they talked about no outside storage, you're gonna need a setback, so you need to be really clear that if that's what you're gonna submit, that in your state genetic compliance, the red.
The side yard is seventy, the side yard is twenty, and there's no outside storage inside yard.
And what about that top section of the parking lot?
I'm sorry.
What about the top section of that parking lot?
You hear?
Yeah, oh, northern, yeah, oh, there you are.
Yeah, that's just grading. And this is asphalt.
What's the setback?
Oh, here, you're probably around sixty feet.
So did you, did you mention before that that's gonna be stored as well?
No, the storage area is, is over here.
So it's only that small portion?
Yeah, this is the lay down yard, this is where they'll store trailers and stuff, but this is not the same thing as storage, sand and stuff. They'll park tractor trailers in here, they'll park plows, but this is their storage area.
So is it fair to say in terms of words used, lay down yard would be where?
Do you wanna turn a truck, you wanna, you wanna, you wanna park a tractor trailer to offload equipment? You wanna, um, what else would you put in the lay down yard? You know, it's, it's just, it's, it's a, it's a truck turning area, it's a, you'll, you'll park trucks in here, you'll park trailers in here, this is where they're gonna store materials.
You'd also, in the lay down yard is where you'd be putting snow plows, when they're not using the plows?
Well, I kinda wanna put them inside, that's why we're doing the buildings, because I don't want the pistons to rust.
Okay.
Let the, let the park on the yard.
You not identifying yourself?
No, I'm like the camera.
For the record, he's the owner of the, uh, the property, he will be the gobbler.
The, um, parking spaces are compliance for the building, because there's quite a lot of them.
Yeah, there's more than we actually need, but that's what zoning requires, it's.
Right.
Which is, he's only got three to five employees, but you've got, uh, you've got fifteen spaces.
Any other questions? Right, open it up to the public comment, um, so we'll open it up to public comment right now, I, I'll just ask, um, if you could definitely state your name, uh, and I think your address as well, but it'll be helpful if you could write it down since, um, it just helps with taking minutes, so. I am gonna say again, I don't think we received anything regarding this permit, this application. Correspondent.
Over in the home.
Yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, could you state your name?
Yeah, here.
Yeah, you could write it down, it would help us, thank you.
My concern.
Could you just state your name too?
Bradley Conlon. One fifty one Cheshire Road. Uh, Mike, I have a couple of concerns. First, for, you know, two or three trucks, and I'll talk to track the trailers. Um, gonna be twenty thousand square feet of warehouse. It seems like there's gonna be more than two trucks there, two or three trucks. We have homes up against that property, near that property, and we're concerned, one, about the traffic uh, in and out of there, it's a very dangerous corner, we've, we've had an ongoing issue with the last three administrations to try to get something done, but. About that corner. It's a very dangerous corner to coming in and out of now, and I think. By putting something like this in, it'll make it even more dangerous. Um, the other thing is the quality of life, they're gonna have trucks going in and out in the middle of the night. And it's gonna be up against residences to the. To the west. So the dog counts to the east, but we also have. Houses right up against our property to the west. I, I think it would be very detrimental to the community. Have that in that place. Noise at night. Uh, I'm really an industrial zone. I don't know when it was converted to industrial and residential. But, uh. It just doesn't seem like. Plow trucks. Or, you know, five years. He doesn't have the contract for the state anywhere, what is he doing? He rents it out. You don't know what's gonna go in there. I don't know how long his contract for the state is. That can end when. Many doesn't have that anymore, what's, what's gonna go in that building? You know? Is it gonna become a rental? Is it gonna become a storage unit? Are people gonna be coming in and out all day and night? And what's happening with the traffic if he rents out, turns it into. We had a, I was in a seventy thousand square foot building with. Forty businesses in it. Could be broken up into forty businesses rented out with. For the future. So I have some concerns about it going into a residential area.
Pyron, can you clarify just something that might be helpful for everyone? When planning and zoning, um, approves a, a business, right? Or an intention for a, a property. Um, the applicant is bound by that, right? Because, uh, if, if something were changed, it would be a change of use that would be required, right?
That's exactly why I suggested to John Paul that the narrative that's submitted with the application needs to be clear and detailed. And if it's not, then the commission really doesn't have much to go on when it's approved. So whether you close the hearing tonight, or whether you keep it open to receive that, or any other information that may hang out. I would suggest that that's a very important part of the application, so that you do know what's proposed now is as specifically as possible. Uh, so that prevents that, that kind of thing from changing in the future, should information decide to prove. I also think a traffic study would be helpful with trucks going in and out of that location, with the heavy traffic coming through. Forty-two of the streets that they do. They'd be a very dangerous place for.
Is there anything else you'd like to add? Uh, oh, I think there was someone else who.
Uh, my name's Taylor Bolciana. I'm at one seven one Cheshire Road. Um, I have basically the same concerns, um. I don't know much about zoning in general, um, but, uh, you know, we, we purchase. Oh. We purchased, sorry, I couldn't see this either, so I. Um, we purchased in a, you know, out in the woods on purpose. We didn't wanna be near anybody too much, um. And I think a lot of people in Bethany agree with that. Um, it is a very busy street. There's a lot of people. Going up and down the street pretty quick. We have an issue with the mailbox being across the street and I. You know, I'm, uh, uh, fearful every time I have to, to get my mail and write where the curb is, and it's just past that. Um, and I am concerned about there being, um. You know, a, a big business rate right next to residential properties. Um, mine being one of them, obviously. Um, I wake up early for work, so the idea of trucks coming and going in the middle of the night. My husband has been involved with snow plowing in the past, so I do know, um. Those hours can be very difficult, um, so just worried about noise and, um, traffic and. Comings and goings and, and what could, you know, go there in the future as well. Same thing, just worried about the, the size of it. The two ten thousand square foot buildings seems pretty large to me, so.
Anyone else would like to speak?
I just, John, how close to this, I, I can't read that.
All right, you have to, you have to.
I don't know how close. Their property line is to my property line. Um, I looked at it before, it's down, but I didn't figure it out.
About over a thousand feet. Over a thousand feet. Four hundred feet, no, I mean. I just asked. That was like the last vision on.
Yeah, have you in the back?
Right, so first of all, I wanted to, uh.
Could you, I just state your name?
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll go inside.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mark Schneider, thirty-two Sabrina Drive. So first of all, I have to thank the committee, I trust in thankless job, and also we, you know, we know disrespect, but I, obviously we're passionate about this because if, you know. Think of, you live in Bethany, if all of a sudden behind your house, Kentucky Fried Chicken were open, or a large construction company, right? You would probably have some concerns if you have kids and children, so one of the things the gentleman forgot to mention is right across forty-two. There's a gorgeous cul-de-sac that I live on, almost all small children, literally across the street that you can see from the woods. There's a house with three small kids that you're gonna be seeing a huge construction company, two ten thousand square foot, you know, it's absolutely ridiculous. So the first thing I wanted to say is I'm not quite sure that this is in compliance, because I tried to get confirmation stamatics ahead of time. I was told there wasn't a planning commissioner. I called a few times and left messages to try and get information or call back. Nobody calls me back, and this is over a week and a half, so I could not get the information via physically coming or by calling. So if there isn't currently a planning. Whatever you call it, supervisor, and that is upon the voicemail, and then they don't return the voicemails, how can I view for some meeting or anybody else? To have a public comment? If we can get a copy of the information, but five minutes, like a full one, right? So first of all, I don't think we're in compliance, so whoever's handling the regulatory aspect is that I asked if this meeting will be moved or any decisions due to clearly till next year. It not, and I couldn't be the only one. If you call the voicemail, it'll say, sorry, there is no planning and zoning person. I didn't leave the message, but please be understanding, we may or may not call you back, something like that, that's ridiculous. So to, to echo some of the concerns, there is housing on the other side as well, like you can see right through to that. Location. There's also, I think, a solar panel grid being open on the other side, that's, and now that any kind of wildlife that goes through there, forget about it. I mean, it's, it's, if, if, you know, I'm not a huge environmentalist, but if I were, I would be appalled. That's all gonna be destroyed, all that was is gonna be gone on both sides of it, right? The congestion concerns are valid. If you go five or five, forty-two, sixty-nine, it's packed. And in the winter time, there's accidents all over that area. It's a safety concern. I know we have Susie here. I mean, it, there are accidents there all the time, and it's, it's, it's absolutely packed. So I, I think if you think of the community, think of your own house, if you right across the street, like literally your house, you can see across the street where the planes to go. You would say, what, what, what are we thinking? Like, that is a real world charming community, so. I'm being forthright in saying that, you know, I have some vested interest in this. And there's, you know, in my community, in my cul-de-sac, but also I just think it's the wrong thing to do. I don't, I, I think if they wanna do it, they should do it in some other more industrial area, right? And again, we're not talking about, they're minimizing it, but we're talking about two ten thousand square foot. Buildings you're gonna be staring at, right? More traffic. It's gonna be noisy, all the families there are gonna be hearing this. I can hear across the street right now. So in that event, I, I'm dead against it, and I know that the folks on my street are appalled that it's even being considered, I mean, you know, so.
I'm, I'm sure, uh, in light of what I just heard, uh, the public has an absolute right to have access to the application prior to the commencement of the public hearing. So that they can be prepared to present, uh, uh, their position. Uh, the gentleman stated that he tried to get access and he did not gain access to it. Uh, so I, I think that, uh, provisions need to be made, uh. This public hearing should be continued, uh, for two reasons. One is, uh, the public needs to have access to the application, so that they can review it and prepare themselves for the public hearing. And second is, uh, this commission is, uh, the newly elected commission is going to be seated on Saturday. And so that this body will not be constituted in this form at the next public hearing. So the new commissioners will have to either, uh, listen to this, uh, this meeting. To, uh, become familiar. Or, uh, a new public hearing will need to be, so, so next. Uh, I, I think before we go any deeper into this public hearing, in light of the fact that the commission is going to be turning over. It would be, uh, the best practice to just continue the public hearing to the next meeting date. Uh, uh, for the public the opportunity to inspect and review the application by either. Putting the application online, so that they can gain access to it through the internet, or making it readily available in the land use authority. Uh, and, uh. Uh, and then just continuing the public hearing, because I think going any deeper, uh, you're just gonna be, uh. Uh, uh, jeopardizing the application and, uh, the commission because of the turnover.
Okay, Madam Chairman, in the interest of what Vince just said, and the fact that this gentleman wasn't able to access the. Application materials, uh, we're willing to grant a thirty. Thirty day?
We're thirty.
Let's do thirty days, a thirty day extension to allow for. Anybody in the public who wants to try to get access to the materials and the new members to be sworn in. I think that actually shuts everything down. This way here, there's no jeopardy going forward on anybody's part.
You'd be able to provide, um, more details about the building, like, uh, whether there's, where the lighting. If any would be, and if there's any, um, restroom facilities of any kind or.
What's, what facilities?
Um, well, there's a septic, so is there toilet facility?
Yeah, we have approved, we have, uh, there's a septic plan, I think it's.
And where that would be in.
Yeah, and we have an approval for the whole part.
Right.
That's part of your.
Throw more detail on.
It's on the other plans.
Yeah, it's in your plans.
There's a whole septic plan. And modified, uh, modified, uh, narrative.
And it's.
Madam Chairman, what I would suggest to, the suspension should be granted at least the next meeting. I'm not sure if thirty days is pretty.
But that's why I was asking.
For the next meeting.
Well, thirty-five, what, what's, what's in that meeting? To the next meeting.
So just to be clear, because sometimes technicalities matter, we're not. We're not closing the public hearing, because we're continuing to the next meeting.
January seventh, January seventh is, uh. Uh, it's like a thirty, uh, thirty-four days, about thirty-five days.
We could elect to do that anyway. Okay.
The other thing that I might suggest is that there have been a number of comments, uh, to the applicant, except for them. The number of comments with regard to traffic and, and probably some statement, whether it's a full traffic study. Or a letter with regard to traffic and a detail with regard to that. Except for them, but would suggest that probably should be part of the application just to sort of that question.
Now, just also for clarity, this has always been a BNI zone, right? There's no, there's no zoning change here. This has always been BNI.
Right. Question on the traffic concern, the traffic.
Uh, could you state your name?
Steve Susa.
I, I, I.
Just kind of traffic concerns.
What was that?
I couldn't give his name.
These are all state roads, so I believe any traffic concern would have to call through state, not the locals, no.
I can address that for a minute.
Actually, we, we, we pressed a traffic, uh. Uh, study. For the last three years, and, and it's. It's, it's still in the town, having gone to the state yet.
That might be an independent matter.
Well, I guess it'll be handled by, um. Uh. Yes, our.
South.
So, with the, who's the guy?
Oh.
Ben Maron, so.
But, but that sounds like that might be an independent.
It was permissive of the road, the traffic on forty-two.
Yeah, so independent of the application, that it just sounds like that there's an independent activity. Okay.
Just, just for the record. Route forty-two is a state road. Because this is such a low traffic generator, we're not required to have a traffic study. However. Before we can get a permit to construct. We have to go to Pondley and get a curb cut permit.
I was gonna say.
So the state has control over any. Driveway access to forty-two. We have an excess of seven hundred feet, which is good for a fifty-five mile an hour. Uh, we have ex, the, the, the state publishes a whole list of, uh. Of sidelines that you're supposed to meet, depending on the speed of the road. This one here, it's an excess of seven hundred and thirty-five feet. So the state of Connecticut will review this. They do not wanna see it. Until after all the approvals are in place. That's the way the state of Connecticut works. So if this approval is granted. Then before he can construct, he has to go to the state of Connecticut, Pondley, public treasury. And then they have to determine whether or not that driveway meets their standards. You're over a thousand feet from the intersection.
That's all well and good, but I think it's been pointed out, that's, that's a separate issue, I think.
Correct.
What I'm suggesting for the applicant, and you do what you want, is that some, uh, letter or. Study how it will be raised, uh, with regard to the question that has been brought up. In, in that area, uh, be prepared and sent to the commission.
Okay.
I, you're exactly right, that the, the state won't look at it until the commission approved, but that's not really the question before the commission right now. And I think if, if some, uh, some level of study is prepared with the paratubing, volume, this, like that.
I think that's done well, that's easy.
Pyron, can you, do you have, is there a threshold? Because you had mentioned that this is below the threshold, obviously. In terms of driving a traffic study, like if a Walmart went in or something of that scale, is there a threshold?
Really up to the applicant to decide. There are all kinds of things like levels of service and so on, and I don't think we're talking. About any significant amount of level of service change. This is really more of a safety question, I believe, that's what I'm hearing. And so it's, it's not, it's not a level of service study that's gonna require traffic fouls and so on. But I think that's up to the applicant to decide how detailed they're gonna get into that. I'm just suggesting that something along those lines to answer the questions that have been asked, be put into the record before the hearings close. So.
Franco? The first thing I have, the first thing that came to my mind is those poor dogs in that kennel. With all the trucks going back and forth, all of the exhaust tubes. I just have to say, I feel so bad for those dogs that are there. That's all I have to say about the exhaust fumes, the trucks going back and forth. And because I've been sitting in these meetings for the past year. What I've learned about these side plants is there's a lot of inconsistencies there. There's no spaces for a loading dock. And we all know if P N Z manual, that he has to have a loading dock in there. Um, as far as the parking lot, he has to have, um, for a green earth, um, landscaping, parking lot landscaping. I don't know what's in there, as I couldn't see these plans either. Um, but there are several inconsistencies there. All you have to do is pick up the P N Z manual. What I did, the whole three hundred and eighty-four pages and go line by line by line, and you will find the inconsistencies here. Every single one, that's all you have to do. Look at their regulations, look what he's missing on there. Just from the, just from the top of my head, I can say the loading dock is not there. Parking lot is not there, um, handicap spaces, where are those? There's nothing. And as far as him coming up there and saying three to five people, you need to get confirmation of that. People come to you and they like straight to your face. Please don't do that anymore.
Madam Chair, if you're gonna continue the public hearing and allow public comment. Anyone from the public speaking should affirmatively waive their claim that they were denied access to the application. Because it's, it becomes unfair to the applicant, uh, if the, uh. If the public continues to comment and then they are subject to a claim that. They, on appeal potentially, that they were denied access. I think the prudent course would be to continue this in the next, uh, meeting date. Take no further comment, so that the public can be afforded the right to inspect the, uh, application. And so that both the applicant's and the public's right to preserve.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is it's preferable, in your opinion, just to end all public comment at this date, and we'll move it to the January meeting?
That's correct.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll make a motion that we continue this public hearing. The next meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission in January.
It's be January seventh.
Right, do we have a second?
Yes, you have a question for the applicants?
We, are we stuck in a, we have a motion on the table. We can, we can take a question? Or no, I guess not. Okay, we'll have to wait. Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Extentions? Move it to the next. Next one up, uh second. Public hearing for application twenty twenty five zero one two, Kevin Cox, sixty five Emerald Lane. Our sixty five zone. Uh proposal applicant uh submitted proposal for a plant nursery, a cut, you can pick your own and other related activities. Tyrone, well, I don't have to reintroduce everybody, right? Which just. Okay, and this is for a um. A change of uh zoning, correct? This is a residential zone. That would require a a change.
She can see.
Yes.
Do we need this?
Oh, um, do we need, is it four or five?
Do we need to set an alternate for this or since we have four commissioners?
Two, three, four, so we have. Yeah.
You have a fifth person who will probably be here next meeting as a member.
All right, um, is there, we have a known rotation?
We have a rotation, but it's not known. Strong feelings about.
Do you, does anybody want to volunteer uh to be seated, I guess, as the potentially fifth voting member this evening? You want to take it? Okay, so we'll see um. Adam, this evening?
Here, have you disqualified?
Yeah.
Okay, you got that.
Okay. And I just wanted to be clear, Tyrone, is there a requested um zoning change in this one? This is, I really just want to be clear, this is a residential zone that would require a zoning change for a business.
I'd let the applicant explain it in German, but I believe it's a residential zone and it's a use in the zone, that's the question. And the um use that's not questionably allowing the zones, why is that public hearing that?
Okay, all right, um so do we have the applicant here who would like to? And if you can introduce yourself.
For the record, Fred Venko, I'm the engineer for the project, licensed civil engineer and land surveyor in in Oxford, Connecticut. Um I was actually told to start with that there's a farm status on this property, existing farm status. So I think, I don't think it requires a zone change. I think the farm use is allowed in the residential area.
What do you mean by right, right, farm status?
So that's farm status with the state as far as those four ninety, I believe that's what it is. Is any panelist farm status before I'm boy and and um he's come to the commission and talked to them. He said that this wasn't allowed use.
Yeah, so there evidence that that four ninety status, and I heard it all.
Uh should be. Uh covered docs, oh, we got Royal Lane, sixty five Royal Lane.
I'll continue to look at it, but in the interest of time, if you want us.
If you, if you can't find it, well, in in the meantime, we'll.
Yeah, I would recommend, yeah, if we can't find it, I would recommend that you provide it.
Uh basically, what the the project consists of, it's a seven acre lot, um right now being used. Um basically being used as a nursery. There's a um stockpile, a topsoil stockpile there. He's using it for wood chips and also um he's uh basically starting planting there. But he's going to continue um with his plantings there, or as he has a retail business in Seymour. Where he actually sells the uh plants, uh so we'll be growing them at this site. And in preparation for the retail site, um basically the the uh. The plan just shows the whole site is uh um has plantings throughout the site. Um there's one uh small nursery area for smaller plantings, and then there's also um an area. Which is a server area for trees. And then later he's planning on having a uh also precious tree cutting, buy your own tree. Well, basically, it's it's just a nursery um for his retail business. He will be, he will be stockpiling uh topsoil and um um. The the areas for the for the planting, so. Think there's also one area that's shown where he's he's stockpiling some uh um logs to cut firewood for his, for his own family. But he doesn't plan on selling firewood.
Are there any structures on the property right now? Or is it just like?
There's just a couple of turnout buildings.
There's no house or?
No, no, there's not going to be, it's not going to be a dwelling.
You know, but right now, there's.
Yeah, there's not going to be, there won't be a barn until in the future he made constructed barns, but at this time, there's, you don't plan on having any structures. Sorry, for the great, the great, there's going to be the us. That's on the phone.
This is the end of Emerald.
It's at the very end of the cold set.
There's a house at each end, on each side, so this is just beyond that.
This is this is beyond the house. Was right through, past those two houses.
Could you just clarify, so the property primarily is to grow. Trees, shrubs, bushes.
For nursery stocking.
Okay.
You know, some will be in containers, some would be planted.
So you indicated that um the materials brought on the property will include. Unscreened topsoil, composting materials, wood chips, gravel, is that ongoing or is that a one time get it set up?
Be something that you would use, you know, for the nursery and uh you know, the operation. You know, you'd be constantly making compost and whatever for them.
Would you be selling, would you be selling any of that material?
Not out of there, I wouldn't. If anything came out of there, it would go to my uh retail.
But you'd be storing it there?
Correct, there's some um. Markings there for bins for storage and a stockpile area.
So I I I guess I don't understand how that relates to a farm operation if you're storing material, the one commercial enterprise. On this property.
It's a nursery, so you're going to, perhaps if I don't use all of that material on that uh property, then if I took it off from there. And we could, it's like the trees I bring them in, then I'm going to take them to the nursery to sell them. You know, it's it's not, it's not like it's going to be open to the public to come in and, you know, traffic all the time up and down for people to come in and. And uh you know, buy the plants from there.
But it's, it sounds, I mean, we have to hear from the public, but it sounds like based on the letters that have been written. About noise and about truck traffic, it seems to me that if you're storing material there. I understand what you're trying to do for the nursery, but if you're storing material to be sold in a different commercial location. That doesn't seem to be farm purpose.
That's the whole. This whole thing is, is the nursery, you're going to grow stuff and and, you know, bring in product. Any, any nursery, you know, planner's choice or anything like that, then the product gets sold. You know, they sell on their property. I'm not looking to do that unless we have uh like a cut your own Christmas trees, you know, which. Before I purchased the property, we came before the board and spoke with them, and they said that was all fine to do. That that was a lot. When I was in twenty twenty two, big before, before I bought the property, I checked with them.
You came to the planning and zoning commission?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
That would be in our nets. I mean, I, there was a complaint about logging activity at that point, right? And I thought that was really just the, maybe I'm wrong, I thought it was a zoning enforcement issue, but never follow being an application and. Us ever giving our blessing to any sort of activity that, but if we did, it would be in men's insurance.
If there was, I don't believe there was a formal application, right? Now, we spoke to him, just right inside a property to make sure that that would be allowed on that property. Yeah, I didn't want to just buy a field, to have a field, you know, purpose once for a nursery, so.
I suggest, Andrew, if there, if there's nothing else for the applicant to say, if that opposed the use, I would just ask whatever public.
And um we're not quite sure if we found, you said it's a four ninety form for farm use?
That's okay.
Okay.
I checked the town attorney, checked that, it was on the assessments card.
It is, so it's an established farm.
Much before I bought it and, you know, we're able to apply for that same designation.
Okay, and so that must carry some uh uh farm being a business logically. Must allow for some type of business on that.
Our app, four ninety is a tax assessment classification. I think what the commission will end up looking at before it makes a decision in this application is the definition that's in the regulations, that things that are allowed in the residential zone. And farming defined in section two of the regulations, it talks about that, and once the application is, presentation is finalized. Uh the commission can make additional connections to whether it fits or not, and you don't, again, you don't have to make that determination tonight.
And in the zoning register, says a nursery is considered a farming activity.
I can speak to what the property was used for.
If you're disqualified, don't say anything, Karen.
Oh, I was speaking as a public.
My suggestion, but I don't think so.
I am the neighbor.
So I I'm sure it's in here, and this is probably another case where you want to make sure that whatever's before us. Is very well articulated in terms of what is being requested um. And perhaps to follow up, it says it's a nursery where you intend to grow products.
And store product.
Grow and store.
Some of itself comes in containers, stays in containers until it goes to the the retail outlet.
And where is your, your retail is outside? Okay, on Route sixty seven.
Right.
Okay. All right, and so you do not intend to sell directly from this property except for perhaps? And I, is that in here that you, with this application would be a cut your own?
Yeah.
Okay, so so that would be the one, say, commercial, direct commercial sale. On this property would be for um cut your own Christmas.
Right, and like I stated in here too, that, you know, if I got a customer who's looking for a specific tree, you know. I've got ten of them up here, come up and pick which one you want. You know, a lot of those tents, if we bring a ten down to my place, they fit one, not bringing that back. You know, but it's not, that wouldn't be a constant everyday thing, you know.
And the firewood and log storage area, which you have delineated here.
Right.
You're stating that that's personal use?
No, so only we take down to the nursery and sell too.
Okay, so but you you cut here for sale down on sixty seven? Okay. But I guess I could say it's like processing, you do wood processing.
Yeah, we've got the the logs there, my guys are going there and split it.
Okay. Is anyone else have any questions? Otherwise, we'll open the floor. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Um we'll open for public comment. I just um ask again if you could introduce yourself where you live, and it would be helpful if we did have your name just for our records.
Linda Crusoe, four oh nine Bethmore Road.
I would like to also submit pictures. Um well filled on at sixty five Emerald Lane. Which is a complete lie, that's what he just told us.
Can we accept right now, hand it, okay.
I would also like you to hear what I hear from my backyard all summer long. Coming from Emerald Lane. This is Kim with a bulldozer, bulldozing. Soil from trucks and stockpiling it and then putting it through a screen on there. This goes on day after day after day. This is his. Manufacturing his saws. This is the, this is him sawing his wood. You will see in the pictures that I have stockpiles of wood. If he has a fifty five room mansion. He won't be able to use this much wood in five years. I also burn wood. I also know what it's like to burn wood and to saw. I do one weekend, a month, a one weekend out of a year to do that. It doesn't take this. He doesn't have a tree on the lot. I have been complaining about this since April twenty twenty four. Lena had did nothing about it. She just pushed me off and pushed me off and pushed me off. There is logs down there. He pulls the logs, he takes them, he puts them into big black dumpsters. His rooster trucks come, pick them up and drive down uh Emerald Lane, back down Schaefer. Sometimes to to tour people, we go up Schaefer and down Bethmore, and then he brings them to his place over in um Seymour. The dirt, big trucks, big trucks come in and he then he streams the soil, he has to put in the trucks. The trucks go, they take, it's like every hour they go by, and this goes on for weeks at a time. This is nowhere near a nursery. A nursery is nice and quiet. Bethany Farms is a nursery. That's a beautiful place. This is not. This is a junkyard, and he has nothing but a business he's running out of here. He takes all of his stuff and he runs it down to his roosters. I followed him, personally followed him, taking logs and taking all of his his dirt. And bring it down to rooster and bring it down there to sell. This is a business. And if you're going to let him do this, you're going to have to change this to a to from residential to commercial zone, and I will fight this town tooth and nail. Because it's not happening. I've lived in Bethany for thirty five years. I don't deserve to pay taxes and have to listen to this. And my house, and my beautiful house, and have to, can't even sit in my backyard and have to listen to this day in and day out. He is such a liar. This is the furthest thing of what's happening over on on sixty five. I'm going to ask, there's no other further comments or applause, just you'll all be given an opportunity to speak. Please, just in the interest of time and just generally running the meeting, I'm just going to ask that.
I'm sure uh the uh person from the public had uh played some audio. If she could submit the audio uh to us, so we have this part of the record.
Absolutely fair. Have been allowed to, or have been up, could you do that?
We're good at you.
Questions to the chair? What did you mean when you said he doesn't have any trees on the lot?
Not a tree on lot. Look at the pictures.
Nothing's been planted.
There's nothing been planted there, and I have been complaining about this since April twenty twenty four. This is in in the spring, the summer, and uh for instance, last month. Six fifty AM on Wednesday morning, he was loading his bulldozers onto flatbeds and taking them out of there. No, it's knocked me out of my bed. That's how loud it was. I can't even take a Zoom call for work in my own home. Because I have to hear this. I can't have my windows open because I have to listen to this. It is not fair. I pay taxes and we're in a residential area. It is not fair. Tyrone, just a question for you with respect to a property that the state recognizes as a farm. It sounds like we have a town of heat, planning and zoning a summer. It sounds like we have a town of heat, planning and zoning, a some discretion with respect to what it can approve on the property.
Yeah, the, um, the, the definition that the state has for, uh, farming is, is contained in the regulations, one dash one Q. And, um, once the information is submitted and public has their comments, the commission will need to go through that carefully and make a decision as to whether the application fits that definition or not. Um, if the, the four ninety, um, designation is typically, as I mentioned before, a tax designation, assessment designation. Um, we can choose a ten acres or more for a period of time. Um, but that, that's basically the process.
So I haven't read one dash one Q. I will, but it sounds like I'm, I'm just kind of working through this logically. There may be some things at the state level that a local planning and zoning cannot control because the state has set acceptance for certain things, but there's certain things we can't.
That's, that's right. And the community needs to understand, people need to understand, everybody wants to live in a rural community and they want to provide for farming and so on. And so it's up to the commission to make a determination as to what's been, what's being proposed, what the definition says it's allowable for that zone and whether that fits the application or not. Once you get all the information.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Darren, are you aware whether the tax assessor has done an assessment on the property to determine the agricultural productivity component?
Typically, what the owner does is submit that application to this, to the assessor that goes to the state and it's classified as four ninety act. I think the town attorney has verified that.
Right.
Yes.
So it hasn't been done?
Yes.
Has already been done, yeah.
There's a designation on the assessments card that four ninety application, uh, was filed. So, uh, it appears to have four ninety status.
Do we know how long it's at four ninety seven?
It doesn't have the, it doesn't have the application date.
How long has four ninety status been a thing? Has it, have we talked about like fifty, hundred years or is that something relatively?
I don't know about a hundred, but it's certainly been thirty years. I know that.
Okay.
It's seventies or eights.
Can I also request that the committee go to this property and look and see for themselves what's happening over there?
You can request it. They don't have to do it. Well, that's, that's up to the commission, whether you want to go individually or whether you want to make it a special meeting and go to the site. That's, that's entirely up to you at some point.
So Nina actually.
Uh, can you, uh, introduce yourself?
I'm Frankie Crusoe, I live at four oh nine Bethmore Road. I'll sign a picture of that. But Nina was actually there and she never did anything about, so. And now he's kind of backtracking. When he came up here, he stated that the wood was for himself. By the end of it, he was saying that the wood was being sold. I mean. Can we do anything about this? Can you guys like, we have pictures. Can somebody go and look like how we?
We have pictures, we have neighbors, we have.
Yeah, people on the, yeah, people on the street. I mean, people across the street, I'm from Bethmore, are complaining about this. I mean, it's not just one street. It's not just, it's, it's a community.
It's a little area.
Yeah.
And it's total disrespect.
Yeah.
For anybody.
I mean, how do you, how do you plan to have women people come into the, into the town with something like this going on? Somebody just said that they came here for a rural experience, live in the woods. How, how is this fair? Sharon Higgins. I live on Emerald Lane.
Yeah, I recognized.
Fifty one Emerald Lane, Stephen Susan. I live, my property line is right on the property line with that property. I sleep with my windows open. These trucks are not in there before eight o'clock in the morning.
I, I. One.
They are not in there before eight o'clock in the morning. If they've been in there for two weeks at a time doing anything with wood processing, that's a lot. Okay, the trucks are not in there and out of there constantly. So they live up the hill. I live right there. If I don't hear it, I don't understand how they're hearing it louder than I can up a hill.
Well, we have timestamps.
I don't care what your timestamps say.
One at a time.
Yeah, no, no more.
Hold on.
The chair is directing.
Yeah, this is, this is not an open debate.
So my, my point is, I'm right there. I don't hear it. So. And I don't have a problem with what's been proposed.
Okay, thank you. All right, in the back.
Darren Higgins, I live on the adjacent side of the property. And I did listen to the presentation from, um, the surveyor and Kevin, and Kevin corrected him about the wood usage just after he said this. That was a mistake. I've lived there now for five years and my wife has lived across the street, um, where Steevers, yes, we are related. Uh, always like, and, um, I've watched the top soil come in and go out. And the machine that they use to screen it is nothing more than a large splitter sized engine. So I checked it out, right? So it's no more than a lot more running. Sure, it runs for a period of time when they're screening that room, but these trucks are not going twenty four seven. They're not hauling wood in and out of there twenty four seven. There's wood on the property. I've seen it. They are doing, you could hear the chainsaw running. And there was a bulldozer when they were pushing up that top soil, but that hasn't happened since. And that was a one time, uh, thing that I've seen. So there's a gross exaggeration. Uh, that's been stated here, and I just want to speak in favor of the folks that are going to be growing on that property. I think it would be great to see it grow and, uh, I encourage it, so. I think we just need to level the, the plains.
Yes, in the neighborhood, thank you.
Hi, I'm Christian Lamaro. I live at four nineteen Bethmore Road. My property, if that's maybe sixty five Emerald Lane, um, directed above. Okay. I have submitted a letter. I've submitted a log because Nina had told me to keep a log of all the dates and the noise that I was hearing. I had made recordings and submitted them to, to Luna. Um, I've sent her video of the, these are not logs. These are tree trunks that are shipped in on flatbeds. They're huge. They're trees. There's no way that this can be personal use. My neighbor has followed them to Seymour where he sells them. Okay. The noises that you hear are the chainsaws starting early in the morning. Yes, before eight AM. They start sometimes like seventy fifteen or so. I have it all, all in the logs that was submitted. Okay. I can't keep my windows open in the summertime because it's that loud. Even with the windows closed, I hear it. It's not as loud, the window's closed, but I can still hear it inside my home. I have lived there for thirty two years. It is a residential zone, and this should not be happening. This should not be happening. I don't care if he plants Christmas trees, but this logging operation has to stop. This, this is not, it should not be permitted. It's just not fair. Um, if you need further information, I have, uh, more recordings. I have videos that I take on my own property down the, the back. That I can submit it, but. You know, it, I, it has slowed down in the past, you know, few weeks. But when they start with the chainsaws, and it's on the weekends that they do it, the days that I can sleep late, they start with this, so. It's just not right. And Nina says, oh, it has to be business hours. It's not business hours. Um. It's just, uh, it's, it's ruining the whole neighborhood. It's, um, it's just not fair to us. We, we didn't pay taxes, as, as I just said, and we do live in a residential zone. So, I mean, if he wants to run a farm, which is fine, but he, he hasn't planted one thing there. I mean, he's lucky.
But he didn't say anything was?
There's nothing. All right, there's no animals there. There's, there's no farming going. There's a lot of, it's a lot in operation and it's commercial because he's selling those logs.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
I chose, chair follows three, three, three Bethmore. Um, I run a farm adjacent to him. And, um, yes, I do hear processing. So if processing isn't part of farming, well, then they have a valid one. If. He's gonna grow trees and he's gonna have, cut your own tree. I don't know if anybody's ever gone to cut your own tree. Thousands of people show. Thousands. Now, I don't know if you have a couple hundred trees, well, then it's gonna be a couple hundred people. That's not fun. That's commercial sale. There you go. So, you know. And if it's allowed, then I can't say. I run a farm. I do what I believe is allowed. I don't do what I believe is not allowed. I will tell you the processing does fall all the way down. The slamming with the trucks, they went that in a rural neighborhood. I'm sure people's dogs are barking. Other people's, uh, you know. He's in quite a rough time.
And every time the logs are thrown into the dumpster, it makes loud, loud banging noises.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Yes.
Jamar Harrington, um, the last year and a half or so, we've had dump trucks filled with, I mean, you know, filled with dirt coming up. What they do is they come around the corner and then they push down on the, on the accelerator and we get all this diesel uh, fumes coming into the house, into the door, into the apartment where we're out there working. The other thing is, is that we've had three houses that were built on the left side of Emerald Lane. It should never have been built. You knew they had wet lamps. Now he, and we've got, we sent the pictures in of the, of the, uh, erosion of our property from water. And now we're getting it all the way down. But the, uh, the, the fumes and the noise and the pass that even on Sunday they're doing it. And if he's, he's lying because you can hear it from my house and we're at the bottom of Emerald Lane.
I know where you are. That's not a lot.
The relatives, we, we have to take that into consideration.
And I'm done. Do you good, what's your address for? Your address? Oh, I have sixty six Schaefer Road. We're right on the corner of Emerald and, and Schaefer. Thank you. The driveway's on Emerald.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Just all the same.
Uh, could you introduce yourself, please, ma'am?
Well, I think I get them. Six Schaefer Road, one over Emerald Lane. Actually, the property is listed at second Emerald Lane, so what they. Anyway. To add to this, it's just noise, the pollution and disturbing. I live on Bethany for twenty five years paying taxes. Nothing the same. Nothing is the same for two months. Lot of noise, a lot of traffic. The same as my neighbors, the two road over here where suffering, where all of this so far. Breathing in the same film, dealing, dealing with the same noise for about two years. And it's not fair, not fair to change the residential to professional property because somebody wants to gain some profit on our expense. I'm done.
One more thing. If he's gonna have a pickup, you're wrong. That's gonna put more traffic on Emerald Lane at certain times, and we don't want that. We don't need that going into our land.
Tim, I don't know if you can answer that this time. Like I said, I'm gonna go read, uh, one dash one Q. Because I'd really like to understand what farm status entails and allows and where we have discretion and where we don't. But in terms of a farm, I would, because my first question was, is this in front of us for a, uh, a zoning change, right? And it sounds like it's not because the farm status on the property is, carries some commercial activity with it?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just really the use that we're looking at rather than changing that.
Okay.
Madame Chair, point of clarification, under PA four ninety, that's not a one time designation, correct? As far, for tax purposes, as farmland, you have to reapply on periodic basis to have that designation as tax, as farmland.
And I think the latest one we found, was it, was that submitted?
Twenty two.
Twenty twenty two?
Yeah, I think it's ten years.
So it's still.
There now for sure. And I think it's, it's in the standard. Like you would have said, you apply for it.
So let me just get clarification. This is all about a tax status?
No, it's used. Don't, don't worry about the taxes.
Okay, that, I wanted to kind of differentiate between.
You're qualified for the tax status. You have to be, it has to be determined that you are farming.
Got it.
And then where I was trying to go was logically, if you're a farm, that is going to not just allow you, but there's an expectation. Logically, if you're gonna get the tax, that there's an expectation that some type of farming activity occurs.
Absolutely.
But where we have discretion versus what the state gives blanket approval for, I don't know yet. I have to read one dash one Q. Any other questions or comments? Another comment. Mary Lockman, uh, three Goldenwood Court. I live across this, well, I live up the hill, across Bethmore, on Glenwood. I hear it. I hear all of the machinery. Um, weekdays, weekend, it doesn't matter. It's annoying. It's harassment of the neighbors. But I also have a point about this farm stats. The prior owner applied for his farm stats. Is that correct? You know how long it's been on the books? Twenty twenty two?
What, what?
Did this man own that property in twenty twenty two?
I think the, I don't need to be rude, ma'am, but the only thing that the commission asks is, is it on the four ninety now? And that's, that's the case.
Oh, sure, sure, I know. But if, if you were somebody who has come to the town, you want to pay as little tax as possible. So you're gonna pick a property that has farm status because the tax, tax is gonna be less on that than in a residential property. So, okay, so we buy a farm. Uh, but it was designated farm because there was a farm status in the past. That does not necessarily mean what's going on now. So it seems to me that it should be reevaluated based on what's going on now rather than every ten years randomly, um, without, I mean, with, without change of ownership, that's one thing. But if you have change of ownership and change of land use, then it has to be reevaluated. You can continue going, right? But. I have one more comment. If we're seeding new people in January or later this month, we should probably table this whole discussion until the end of that also, right? Well, there is a requirement to hold a public hearing within so many days of an application, and so we do have to follow those rules. We can elect to continue to keep this open, but we must hold, we must start the public hearing within so many days of the application. Was there another comment in the back?
Yeah, Harvey Gray, is there a forty two Emerald Lane? Um, I live next door to Steve, who lives next door to the property. Uh, I don't know whether I'm hard of hearing or maybe I can't hear. But I don't see that all these people say, all the trucks, yeah, there's trucks. But it's not a constant truck issue. I don't think there are any issues. I don't think that there's a constant noise issue. I probably live closer than everybody but him. So. I don't hear the issue. So I can only tell you what I hear and what I say, and I totally disagree with these people. I live right there and they have to pass my house in order to do all this. That's my time.
I can all have these guys when you're leaving.
Should.
I'm not related, just so that you know. I'm sure, and I was gonna suggest that, and I think we've heard the, the general run to know what their comments are. If anybody can talk to me, but, um, if the commission has any thoughts of of visiting the property either individually or as a group, I would recommend is that keeps the hearing open at this point in time. And then deal with it at, at the next meeting. If you do go as a, as a group, we're gonna have to announce that as a, as a special meeting, uh, for the commission to meet there. You go individually, um, then you do not have to do that, but you should, at the next meeting, if you did go there. For those observations on the record, you know, I went there on such and such a date, this is what I saw and go from there. And then you can make a decision after that. What I would recommend to the applicant, it's up to them. Uh, whether they want to grant them extension, uh, for the hearing to the, to the next meeting. That's up, that's up to them.
Just a question now, um, they can grant the extension, but also. Just a question now, um, they can grant the extension, but also can't the board elect to just not close the hearing this evening?
They, they had to open and close it within thirty-five. So in order to get to the next meeting. The, the grant the extension would be the cleanest way to do that. Especially if the commission planning on going to the property, if you've heard everything you need to hear, and you don't plan on going to the property, then. Fine, close the hearing, make a decision at some point in time. You have, after the hearing's closed, you have sixty-five days to make the decision.
Let me just raise the question, some of the commissioners are not gonna be commissioners. At the end of the week, so how does that, if we close the hearing today? And.
You make a decision tonight then.
They'd have, they'd have to make a decision tonight, right?
Well, I, I would say there's something, that if, if you didn't make a decision tonight, then all the new members would have to listen to this, or go through their record. Familiarize themselves with the record and state that on the, on the record before they make a decision at the next meeting. That's, that was long, it's really clear and everybody's on the same page, that's great, yeah.
It.
Can it, I'm, yeah. Um. My two cents in regards to this, for the agricultural aspect of it, one dash one uh Q. I would suggest for everyone here and then the next mission to have any minutes that. Depending on how high of a demand of the firework processing. Especially because he's. Not harvesting onsite, he's actually bringing in the logs, assuming that's the case.
Right.
It, I don't think it would technically qualify for that. However, some of the other operations growing trees and when that does qualify, so. I think we have the potential to. Uh. Limit some of the uh things going on in the property.
With the last section, I wanted to, one Q then, last, last sentence will tell you that. The commission does have the ability to restrict the, uh.
Maybe stricter lens.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
No, that's helpful, because like I said, ha- not having one dash one Q in front of me and not being familiar with it, I'd be very interested in. In the details. So, um. We're still open for a public comment, right? Okay.
Uh, my name is Sean Foley, I have a copy of that regulation, then you'd like to see.
If, if you'd like, I'm still gonna look at it on.
Okay, well then. Um. Um. Uh, I'd like to, to bring up the point that uh the last public hearing was continued because of. The lack of resources in the planning zoning department to provide the public with. Access to the documents for this uh work, um. For, for permitting. That, that would probably apply in this case as well. Though the resources are the same. So I think it should be continued. To provide the public access to all the relevant materials.
I would just say this, that I think the, the office is open, I'm not sure. The tour can, they're, we're on kind of, is there uh twenty-four seven? But anytime the office is open, anybody's welcome to come in and look at the file, I know even in the last application. Some people did come in and look at the file, so it, it's there, um, but happy to, happy to have people come and take a look at it, obviously before the next meeting, but. The answering questions that people might have, I still would recommend, I think, that the commission continues the matter and uh if the applicant will grant that extension. Yeah, I would just say for the record here, unlike the last application, no member of the public stood saying they attempted to get access and could not. Okay, so uh, uh, I did, I did not hear any of that, I mean, it was a public meeting, so uh. But. Uh wherever the, the, the uh, the local body is to continue the matter, uh. You have. You have the time. Uh, cause you have, your next hearing is thirty-four days. Uh, so. You have the time to do it without extension if you need to, but uh if the applicant would afford the commission the extension, it would be efficient.
Okay, so. Uh, does anyone else have any other comments or questions for the applicant or? Anything, okay, I personally would like to read up on. One dash one Q. Um, probably. Line by line with the application and what it entails and. What is within our purview to regulate, what is outside of for. Um, and it sounds like we, we can do that, I, I guess we can request the extension of the applicant for thirty-five days. Right, which would get us past the next meeting, I guess, in, in a sense, it gives us a buffer.
I, I think Connor Turner is right, if it's only thirty-four days and we're good to get to the next meeting anyway, so I just want to be stand corrected, yes. Also, yeah, so, but at that next public hearing, you would either have to, you would have to close or get extension.
Yeah, so we have to meet without an extension being granted, we have to meet on day thirty-four.
Yeah, absolutely, correct. Even if, and if there's a, a weather event.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if that will jeopardize your time, that's why we're asking for the, the uh extension from the applicant.
Yeah, and I may be traveling the first week of. January.
We can do it virtually, yes. There's no escaping.
Um, so I, I, I guess we can ask, i- if you grant the extension, um. At to thirty-five, would it be at least thirty-five days or?
Well, at this point in time. Based on both Connor and says you don't need it, thirty, if it's thirty-four days to the next meeting, we're okay, if the commission just wants to continue the matter until the next meeting, that would be appropriate.
You know, we're concerned about a snow day or something.
That would be the only potential risk, is, you know, would we meet quorum? On, on that day.
I, I suspect if it's a weather issue, we would do it here through the virtual meeting.
Virtual meeting.
Right.
Okay. Um.
I think it would be really good for you guys to do a site walk, I know a site walk would be really hard, I mean, we used to do a lot in the past, and they're very helpful.
Yeah.
To get a. An idea, but um. With the holidays, it's gonna be hard for you guys to get together as a group, so.
It might be easier independently.
Members, you know, as well to just take it aside and.
I definitely will.
Yeah.
Whatever that's worth.
Yeah, I, I think.
Although it is, it is. They're very helpful, and it is good to do this, because. But.
The time of the year, yeah. What, especially it's darker earlier.
And also, they all have to listen to this, or at least this section.
Mm-hmm, we should do them on like a Saturday or something.
Yeah. These snowstorms. Got them in snowstorms.
But if, again, if it's, if we, if you wanna go as a group, we do that, advertise that as a study, we, if you go individual to something.
Yeah, and that, but we can establish that via email, right, if we do want to do that as a special meeting, we can put that together via email. Otherwise, independently, there's nothing stopping any of us from going down there. But, okay, so, um, do we, to be clear, do we need to close the public hearing then, or we're just gonna continue? Okay, all right, so we're gonna, we have a motion, I guess.
Oh, sorry.
Hi, Jonathan Schavitz, I live at Ford Glenwood Court, and I've been there for thirteen years. And I would like to comment that. The noise pollution in these past two years is unsurpassed compared to anything cumulatively. In the ten plus years I've lived there before, you can't be outside, the noise is incessant, I grew up in a farm community. You could count on the tractors, the animals, maybe the smell of manure, what we're getting over here is the. Thump, 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 the grinding of the wood, the, the metal, the trucks. And um, I bought mulch from Rooster, I bought mulch from you repeatedly. I don't know why that grinding and all that noise isn't happening right there in Seymour, where that is commercial, it backs up to some kind of factory warehouse, we all know this site. It's beautiful, you did a great job with that site, but this kind of noise is not farm, it's commercial. It's, it's on, um, you can't depend on when it's gonna happen, and I think. That it, it's being used commercially as it is right now, and furthermore, when um. My husband and I were doing some work, we had to get a permit for it, blah, blah, blah. Isabel came, did a walkthrough, because there was a complaint from a neighbor. I mean. A walkthrough seems like a really easy thing to do, you'll sat, you know, you'll satisfy him, you'll satisfy the neighbor. It, it doesn't look like a farm, I think we'd all like trees, we'd all like plants. I think they've done a good job with Roosters where it's located, but why the wood processing has to happen in a residential neighborhood is.
Unacceptable.
Is unacceptable. Um, that's, I think that's the, the crux of it for so many of us, I mean, I was outside in the fall picking up branches, trying to tend them. Nonstop, at least an hour and a half, nonstop, the wood, the metal. The, and, and by the way, you might live next door to it and not hear it, I can say from where I used to live, we used to have a problem with the neighbor who. We backed up to it, it's the way sound carries, I'm not a scientist, but you know, you're saying you live next door, and maybe it isn't impacting you strongly. But when you're behind it, something about the way noise carries, again, I'm not an expert, you hear it. You hear it, it's, it's nonstop, and you know, what is, what is the logo of Bethany Rural is beautiful, something like that, I mean. Well, like this, this was once the, the best small town to live in Connecticut, and um, it, you know. Bethany has some steps to take, I think, to reach that status. But um. It, it's nonstop, and I wouldn't for it all to take a site walk, because if he can make it a farm and keep it quiet, and make it beautiful. If people can sit outside, who've lived there three times as long as I have, and I got fed up and I went in the house. Because it's like, this. This is not what we signed up for when we moved to Bethany, that's all I can think of.
Right, if there's no other comment. Cause we, one other, uh, it's the applicant this evening.
Yeah, so, so we talked about the farm status, that was farm status before I'm on it. I reapplied for that under what I was doing, it had nothing to do with the previous owner had. And it went through the state, it got approved, you know, through the town and then through the state. Um, so it is something that. That wasn't granted just because it was farm status before.
I was just, hey. They only hate that.
They only hate that, they never.
Yeah, they never did it. That was just hey.
I didn't know.
But that was, that was. I'm just saying.
All right, it's not, it's not, hello? It's not a group discussion. It's, it's not a group discussion, I'm gonna ask you to leave if you can't follow orders. We're gonna be respectful. So at this point, if there's no other independent comment to the commission. I'm going to ask, do we have a motion to keep the um public hearing open till the January meeting?
We make a motion to keep the public hearing open until January, January.
Do we have a second? Second, right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
Thank you.
And the board is gonna be set up on January the seventh?
Yes. Like the seventh of July.
Is that January seven?
Yeah.
January seven.
First Wednesday in January.
First Wednesday in January.
Okay.
That's the sixth of the.
Oh, it's a session.
So new business is up next, oh no, old business.
Yeah.
New business, okay, we. But um.
Yeah, yeah. It's still. Back on the island.
Folks. I'm just gonna, this is still an ongoing meeting, so if you wanna talk, please go outside.
Yes.
Tarek, you're recommending that we can skip old business this, this month, okay? And we'll move to new business? All right, new business item, um. Application twenty-five oh thirteen, Twelve Sergeant Drive LLC, William Greger, Twelve Sergeant Drive being his own. Um. Permit submission for reissue of previous approval for the construction of a commercial building. If someone here to speak, is somebody need to speak to that, or?
I thought this was the application that was um. Passed by default.
I think this is something different, this seems, this is.
Yeah.
It was um.
That's a bottom rule, that was.
Yeah, this is Sergeant, which is by the gas station and the Bethany Mall.
Formality, oh, okay. I was looking at A, I was seeing, okay.
Tarek, reissue of previous approval, can you speak to that, like definition?
Yeah, not without, I mean, I think what has happened is apparently is that the youth have been in the building. And you never previously properly approved. So I'll need to do some research on that before I can do this, but that's why I need to recommend it. People of this direction.
Well, this is new business, so should we have them, the applicant speak to it at least?
Well, this, this is nine A, you're talking about now, right?
Yeah, nine A.
Okay, one guy was referring to where the.
C, B, A.
Oh wait, you said to skip. You recommended skipping old business, right, so that's. Uh, twenty twenty-five double oh nine and twenty twenty-five ten and twenty twenty-five eleven can be skipped this evening, there's no. Action, no discussion?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
So we're on nine A, which is twenty twenty-five oh thirteen, Twelve Sergeant Drive. Permit submission for reissue of previous approval. For the construction of a commercial building. So have Bill talk to it, I'm assuming.
Hi, I'm Bill Digger, at Little One Eighty-Five Fair Road. We purchased a property on Sergeant Drive. And it was previously approved, and we're exactly same footprint, same approvals, we're not changing a damn thing. We're gonna run our company out of there, you're guessing, it's like keep stuff scattered around the storage building. So we wanna put an office in there, and our guys. Our dump trucks will be parked in there. Materials all inside the building.
So there's no, no physical change, you're, you're just, and it's, it's already approved?
Well, I don't know, what's, what's the deal, do we have a site plan though?
Yeah, it was, it was, it was, all the permits were issued for this property.
How long ago was that?
In two thousand and three. So John Paul told me to ask, the wetlands reapproved it, no problems whatsoever. We didn't change the footprint, we didn't change drainage, anything whatsoever.
Yeah, I found it.
I'm confused, why are we having to give you a privet, is it's new owners?
Yeah, we're new owners.
Okay.
And the previous owner gave me all, you know, the approvals, a letter saying that we're allowed to use what you have. And none of the, you know, none of the uh. Requirements have changed.
I have, here's inland wetlands, I had that.
So I don't know, do we have all that stuff in the file?
I see, there's IWC approval here, I see, um.
What previous approval until on? I don't think it's trying to get painted, but I would just suggest that if we don't have all that. Pass it over till the next meeting, is that?
No, it's, it's all in there, all the approvals, all, you know, the data, the toll ports, the zoning signed off, everybody signed off on it.
And it's been used as the same use.
New building being built.
They were gonna run their business out of there.
Not existing. So just to, just, I have inland wetlands application, and it looks like an approval. And that, you said like you recently went back to them?
Right.
Cause that jives with the date, because this one. So like it's October of twenty twenty-five. Um.
This kid, right, why did you go back to nothing?
They didn't know, so we put the hat patient, so we wouldn't mess up some of them. They were unsure. So I said, you know, let's do it, and uh. Everything was standard, exactly how the plan was approved originally. Did the original approval expire?
That's what I'm trying to figure out here.
Authorization, you are hereby granted permission to use all prior building plans in Town of Bethany approvals related to the property at Twelve Sergeant Drive, John. Chika?
Yeah, they own the generator place across the street. And they were gonna put this up when they built their building, and then they now building a big place out west.
So there is a building that you wanna build here?
Oh yeah, we're exactly.
It was not building, he's.
No, we're gonna.
Yeah, we need, we need to.
Okay.
But we're, we're not changing what was approved, footprint, we're not changing the driveway, anything whatsoever.
So what, what the previous owner, just, what the previous land owner had obtained approval. You want to execute essentially.
Exactly.
Okay.
So you don't, we don't have that on hand.
No, he didn't start it within a year, and he didn't finish it within five, so I would say the safest thing to do is have Bill bring that site plan to the.
Really need to see.
We can act on it at the next meeting, is that?
Okay, there's pretty much a site plan that would, it should be in there, just, you know, about five or six topics for everybody. Anything else we'll need to bring?
Bill, if you can. Do you? If previous owner have the meeting minutes? Whenever that was.
Why would we need that?
Why would we need that, it's all approved, the permits there.
But isn't there date expirations though?
No, but we have to read.
It wasn't started within one, finished within five, this is basically a reapproval of that site plan. And I would also just suggest you to have a narrative of what you're proposing.
We put that in there, that we wanna run. Cause we have an office in the house now, the way once out of house.
So I'll look for it in here, but you're basically saying you're gonna run Greger outside.
So we're good guess, right, cause we have back trucks, we have a dump trucks, so everything's gonna be in one building, what I do is someone moves out of a building, the storage. We move a truck over there, it's a pain in the neck. You have the guy's keys to go in the bay, so everything will be parked inside while we run back trucks and dump trucks.
Okay, so it's your, the storage of his equipment for his business, not.
Make sure we have a site plan for the next meeting.
You got it, there, thanks very much.
All right, thank you.
If Bill, for your building, do you have anything with dimensions and sizes and such?
Yeah, it's all on the site plan, the site plan has all the scale here, you know, bring five copies and it's all. It has the park on everything, so you can, you know, it has the plant things and race, when these would be done, drainage and if they know to be added, just let me know.
Yeah, there, there's, there are multiple folders which look like, in fact, some of these go back to two thousand and eight. Uh, in terms of, I guess, what had been proposed and approved. So it's obviously that is. Right, so the request is to bring it forward at the next meeting. That'll carry forward. Okay, um, the next one. Uh, application twenty twenty-five fourteen, Bill Seola Still Waters Community Church, five Amity Road being I zone. Applicant, uh, statement of use submission for change to a church.
Hi, my name is Sam Towel, I'm a not a Bethany resident, but I've been given permission to speak on behalf of uh, William Seola. And I'm also here on behalf of Still Waters, uh, which I am the pastor. And we are looking for a zoning change, uh, for five Amity Road Unit Right. Um, primary use for Sunday morning worship service, um, our congregation is about, we have about forty on average, uh, on Sunday morning. Um, and Sunday morning at nine AM would be our primary time of use. We, I think you have the description of activities and uh, application. Uh, we've submitted documentation to uh, Quinnipiac Health, uh, Quinnipiac Valley Health District and they responded. Um, saying they can approve it, but there's no uh, new permit needed because there's no change authorities. Yeah.
Do I have a folder for finding how many? Is it in my? My many piles?
There's multiple, um, businesses in this.
Yes, you are, correct.
Um, so are you occupying the entire thing, part of the?
Just part, so unit right is that the, the right part of the building on the front, um. It's not.
Facilities there now, the framing?
There's nothing in there currently, I believe the last occupant was a firearms instructor, I think. Well, there, there is a shop in the back, um, but I think, I think it was like a, a permit class. That was in the front before.
Sure.
Um, you should have a basic site plan, I have a more detailed uh, internal plot plan and also uh, an exterior plot plan with uh, parking layout. If you'd like to see that as well, this is very interesting.
Where are you gonna use additional parking?
So if we have need for additional parking, um, we have uh, created a, a parking plot plan, um. In conjunction with Bill Seola, that um, on a Sunday would allow us for twenty-three parking spaces on site. Um, we have about forty attendees on average on a Sunday and the national average of people to car ratio is about two and a half.
Okay.
So that is about sixteen cars we would have um, regularly on the, on the process. On a Sunday morning, if we had an overflow, we also rent um, the, an office space from another uh, another company. Um, on Village Lane, which is just next door, and there's, we've been given express approval to use that space on Sunday for overflow and use a shuttle service if we need. Um, if it's helpful, this, this uh. Site was zoned and approved in twenty seventeen for a church that was, that is carbon copy of, of us in terms of size and use. Um, that's back in twenty seventeen, so.
And you, you expect this is a, a permanent location or temporary location?
Long-term rental, like a year, maybe two, uh, depending on the size of the growth of our congregation, um, if we outgrow it. It's a good problem to have, uh, but we would not stay there. Uh, currently, for those who don't know, we are meeting on Sunday mornings in your lovely gym, um, which has been amazing, uh, but we are really looking for some normalcy. For our congregation, just a, a space that we can call ours, um, that's kind of the next step in the, in the young life of the church.
Any questions?
No comment, and in fact, I mentioned a, a change of zone, it's not really that, just a reversion to that change of use that was previously in the building. That's okay, just trying to shorten the process, uh, there's no change of zone in itself, you have just a change of use, uh, back to what it was previously used for.
Okay. So this one has a profitable action, I'd say this evening, right?
Yeah.
Um. That, I guess. After this, we move into reports, right?
Right.
So I'd, I'd say maybe in the interest of the business. We, we have, we have a potential action this evening, does anybody wanna make a motion to accept the application?
Uh, my name's Norman Paul, eighty-nine Carrington Road. And my understanding, having recently reviewed the regulation, is that the church is considered a public assembly use. As defined in the regulations. And the B and I regulations say that public assembly use required is a special permit. So this is not a just change of use. It's also adding. A dozen or more parking spaces. That's a site plan issue, it's not just a change of use. It triggered all kinds of questions about whether these parking spaces legally conform to the parking dimensional standards. There's lots of questions here. I'll leave it at that, but please, don't rush into this without understanding what the regulations say.
So Hiram, this was already approved, right, previously for worship service?
That should be it, previously approved in what?
Church. For church.
For a church, same use. When was it last a church?
Twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen. Well, that's kind of a conundrum because the regulations required a special permit then. So do you just wanna repeat the same mistake twice? I'm, I'm telling you, you have to read your regulations, just because there's an argument here that is a similar use. Doesn't mean that you're following your regulations.
Can you speak to that?
And if you're a site plan, these parking spaces do not fit. You won't be able to get in the driveway off of Round Hill. The parking spaces will be backing up onto State Highway property. If you're moving landscaping that further violates the landscape standards of the regulation, there's a way to do this, I have no issue with use. I just have an issue with the board not reading the regulations and following. Uh, shut up.
Same use.
This is the question I have to confront, and it obviously involves its mission, but. The previous use was the same use and that's what we were previously done, but I understand what I'm saying and. But we, the commission should uh, abide by its regulations regardless of what a prior commission may have done correctly or incorrectly. I'm not gonna speak to that, cause I'm unaware of um, that process. Uh, so uh, we need to look at regulations and if the regulations require a special, a special permit. Uh, then the com- the commission should follow that process. Uh, and if it requires, you know, a site plan and uh. Uh, I have not reviewed this application, nor uh, applied against regulations prior to this evening, so that's process that we got to.
So is there an assumption that there's no site plan, because if you were coming forward and saying that you were. The, the site plan had been approved, there was a site plan, but it sounds like there may not be a site plan. I think there's a question basically, was it approved correctly in twenty seventeen?
Yeah.
Yeah, good job. Um, I do have a, a detailed site plan, both internal and external, um, and the site plan we use to determine parking spaces. Or the, the formula was, it's, you know, per the code, um, of the state. Um, and also Egress in and out was, it was uh, determined by the state code as well. Um, so I am happy to provide that to you, uh, if, if you'd like.
Yeah, I guess if you, if there are records of that in the, the. It's new, it's new or it's the past?
It's new.
Okay.
There, there is, there was nothing uh, except an internal uh, kind of plan for the space.
Mm-hmm.
In the previous application, uh, for. And we have no intention whatsoever of changing the. Outside, you know, landscaping or we're blocking entrances whatsoever. Um, so.
Uh, so per our regulations, cause I do read them, uh, off-street parking and loading requirements specifically for a church, uh, just something to note. That we'll for in the plans, at least one paved parking space for each three seats based on maximum capacity. Maximum seating capacity, which is something to note, cause I know that area, I'm pretty sure it's mostly no.
Was the prior use the same size?
It should, fifty-seven seats on that, so.
Given the intended purpose for the space, fire marshal sign off, does that all? Have to be part of the application? Okay, I guess. I'm sorry?
The fire marshal.
Seems like parking's bad, they're all in there. Look at the paving, at the parking lot.
They just, he should know, but, cause from my recollection, I mean, I'm not sure where the property line is, but this is all milled on the northern side. And then it's all paved, uh, so I'm not sure what, what constitutes.
Maybe so.
He needs thirteen.
He needs thirteen.
Forty.
Spots. Okay. And you have that on the site plan?
Yeah.
Okay, then I think if you could just.
Thing said fifty-seven, so I got nineteen.
We have, we have that as well, but in terms of seats, uh, fifty-seven chairs is what we had planned to put in the space. We don't have that uh, regular attendance, so.
Well, I was gonna say church attendance too is not gonna be static.
No, it's not.
So you'd never have a permanent, realistic number.
Exactly.
And then with that handicap, um.
Access.
We have handicap access and our, the bathroom that's in the space is eight eight confined.
Now, Chair, with. This could probably be, if required special permit. Uh, the site plan, a special permit application should be filed, should be set down for a hearing at your next meeting. And this way, there's no, again, it protects the applicant. And the commission follow the process, so no one can appeal a decision and say that the commission did not follow this own process. Uh.
All right, so it sounds like.
You should have special permit, you have all the site plans, what were details, then you can make a decision.
Okay, there's a note about special permit here for the church or church, so I, it, it sounds like, yes, if you could submit those then for the next, in, in. In preparation for the next meeting, that would be helpful, the sooner the better, because we can look at them prior to the meeting.
If it's a special permit, does he need to, um. Know that by joining?
That follow the process. Who do we get that from, you or the state? This, to the town, I'm sorry, to the town.
Okay, so then we have no action on this one this evening, we'll move that to.
Here we go to set publics.
Is there a public hearing then too as well to set? Okay, all right.
Wanna set that for your next meeting?
Do you wanna make a motion then, we have a motion to set a public? It's gonna be free. I think, well, I don't think we, we have to set it, in a sense, in a sense that, because the clock's ticking. Yeah, so do we have a motion to set a public hearing for this application for the January meeting?
I'd make a motion that we make, uh. A public hearing for this applicant for January seventh meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions?
Please, um, make sure we have all the documents started for the meetings. Anything that's, you know, fire marshal, whatever it does.
So that moves us to ten, that is permission and staff reports.
I'm sure, unless you need me to say, um.
I don't, I don't think so.
I was gonna go get there.
Yeah, no, that, that's good, thank you. Um, the first one, honestly, um, in the interest of time, it's already after nine, we have continued discussion on Village Center. Um, that I think is gonna be tabled.
Yeah.
Um, plan of conservation and development, that ten years is on the horizon, right, Hiram?
It is coming, folks, and then what I'm gonna suggest is that both A and Bs could be kind of discussed by the commission. Um, Alex mentions earlier about coming back, the, the housing committees work and so on in January or February. And yeah, or we suggest that we don't have those conversations at that time to see how they get together.
And when is the deadline, once again, for um, the O C D update?
I don't have it, you made one adjustment to it, so. Probably if you give it out, but by the time we get it done, it's gonna take one or two to get it done.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we don't wanna back ourselves up into just a few months.
And of course, is that the state has been actively working on the housing legislation. And uh, there are some things that in there that require us, the commission to do some work on housing as well. We can talk about that in another meeting as well, so all fit together, the housing plan ultimately will have to be part of the. Plan of pastigation development, the next time it's completed.
Okay, sounds that we might need some. Extra meetings just for P S C D.
Think that, uh. Well, you can decide what you wanna do, but once in a while, having separate.
Yeah, I was gonna say, just in terms of the usual month-to-month business.
During the passage, it'd be great beneficial.
Yeah, I think probably we wanna do some independent ones.
There's nothing, nobody actually cleared it, they're, I have seen. And as I mentioned, I believe that I, the prepared to the uh. A dash two J, uh, had been taken care of and I sent it to them, that led to the first election, that's taken care of.
Okay.
The South Central, uh, team taking various staff planning, this is regarding to the project proposal, this project municipal loan program. Um, I'm not sure of the status of that, to be honest with you, Lena was taking care of that before she left. Uh, so I'm happy to check the status of that as well, and I'm not sure what the um, proposal for the uh, look the loan was. I, I just don't remember what it was for.
All right, thank you. And that moves to Z E O reports, um. We wanna run through those.
Those are essentially the same thing you saw on the last agenda, there hasn't been any change to them, there hasn't been the uh, additional. Investigation or work, and I, you know, I'm sure that you're aware that they're still out there.
Okay, yeah, so that's forty, the forty-three and fifty-one, two road, seventy-four Amity Road. Two twelve Amity Road, seventy-five Presswood. And I think that rounds out. Um. Z E O officers report.
I have a question.
With status.
What's, what's the status on spurring into the Z E O?
Um, we have, I think, last I checked, there's ten applications. And few of us reviewed them in terms of. And few of us reviewed them in terms of, I'd say, top candidates to bring in. I don't think there's anyone, at, at least that I've seen, who has direct experience in this role. And, um, no one was available for interviews over the holiday weekend, so it's really gonna start now. And there's a, a number of us who, Jen has reached out for interviews. This is what, but no one right now. But ten applications.
Is there a timer in, like, for the next meeting, or?
I'd say, you know, I think to everybody's. You know, as, as soon as possible, I would think, uh, it, it's just like I said, that the timing really wasn't that good across, um. Across the Thanksgiving break, um. Chris, inland wetlands wasn't available, I was traveling, a number of us doesn't work here, but I would think this week, probably, you know, we would start booking a few. So that, uh, there's no other comments or questions on ZEO report? Um, we have action on any discussed above, I don't think there's any app in front of us right now that's been deferred. Um, other business? You know, I think. Earlier on, we had talked about that software, you're kind of monitoring, um. Hiram, that, um. With the RFPs that were sent out for the software, so. That was kind of in my other business, but, you know, thanks, Veronica, you rolled it up into the, the, the business ahead of it, so thank you, that was like, I said, in my back pocket. And then otherwise, I guess, if there's no other business to.
We'll make a motion to adjourn.
Can we? Yeah. Let's adjourn and then.
I just wanted to.
What do we, I know it's coming, but we'll adjourn the meeting and then hear good news. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?